Good evening and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council's Legislative Agenda. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, and tonight we will be having Poetry at the Podium, which was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Curtis, come on down Curtis, reading Midday Silence. Welcome.
Thank you. Midday Silence. I push a chair in against the table, lift it slightly to keep it from scraping, then boil some water for tea at the stove. My dog sits at a window and whines, leaves curl into palms half clenched and pale, narrowing light into pinpoints airy and twining. The water boils, the stove crackles and steam, swelling upward billows from the pot. I tilt it over a mug and wrap my fingers tightly around the ceramic. The hush of the heater from a corner of the room falls against my neck like snow. Daylight falls through the window like lace onto the dog, coiling her body into a fist, breathing softly through her nose. Have you noticed? I start, then wonder who I'm speaking to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you would give me council president privilege today, we lost a giant in the world, and that was Pope Francis, who meant so much to so many people. If you would please join me in a moment of silence to recognize his passing. Thank you, and my heart goes out to all the people in the Catholic faith today. Next, we are going to have a presentation and a report from the Upper Columbia United Tribes, the UCATs, State of the Land Presentation from D.R. Michael. Come on down, D.R.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council's Legislative Agenda. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, and tonight we will be having Poetry at the Podium, which was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Curtis, come on down Curtis, reading Midday Silence. Welcome.
Thank you. Midday Silence. I push a chair in against the table, lift it slightly to keep it from scraping, then boil some water for tea at the stove. My dog sits at a window and whines, leaves curl into palms half clenched and pale, narrowing light into pinpoints airy and twining. The water boils, the stove crackles and steam, swelling upward billows from the pot. I tilt it over a mug and wrap my fingers tightly around the ceramic. The hush of the heater from a corner of the room falls against my neck like snow. Daylight falls through the window like lace onto the dog, coiling her body into a fist, breathing softly through her nose. Have you noticed? I start, then wonder who I'm speaking to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you would give me council president privilege today, we lost a giant in the world, and that was Pope Francis, who meant so much to so many people. If you would please join me in a moment of silence to recognize his passing. Thank you, and my heart goes out to all the people in the Catholic faith today. Next, we are going to have a presentation and a report from the Upper Columbia United Tribes, the UCATs, State of the Land Presentation from D.R. Michael. Come on down, D.R.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, I'm very honored to be here with you tonight. Again, my name's D.R. Michelle. I'm a citizen of the Lakes, Cauklaabans, as the Confederated Tribes of the Cauklaab Reservation. I've been the Executive Director of the Upper Columbia United Tribes for 17 years now. We provide a common voice for the region through the collaboration of the UCAT Tribes, the Quarterlane Tribe, the Confederated Tribes of the Cauklaab Reservation, the Cowspell Tribe of Indians, the Kootenai Tribe of Idaho, and the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Together, we manage and influence nearly 2 million acres of tribal land and almost 14 million acres of Aboriginal territories. Our mission statement is to unite the Upper Columbia River Tribes for the protection, preservation, and enhancement of treaty, executive order rights, sovereignty, culture, fish, water, wildlife, habitat, and other interests and issues of common concern in our respective territories through a structured process of cooperation and coordination for the benefit of all. And recently, we went through a strategic planning process, and we talked about our mission statement because it used to read "for the benefit of all people." But because of the tribes and how we look at everything, this mission statement should benefit all, all living creatures, all living organisms, how the tribes traditionally interacted with that. So, we took off the people and made it "for the benefit of all." So, when we look at that, are we talking about that? We're talking about the whole, the environment, that connection and that whole, who we are. A couple of programs I'd like to talk about. We were successful in getting the Columbia River Toxic Reduction Lead Entity Project. It's coordinated and it's engaging the five plateau tribes and regional stakeholders in reducing toxic pollution in the Upper Columbia Basin watershed. Columbia River Toxic Reduction Lead Energy Project will award over $5 million to UCAT member tribes and the community stakeholders to reduce toxics in our region. These funds will also engage tribes in creating plans to further understand the direction of the Upper Columbia region needs to go to protect the South, rescue toxic, and protect fish and wildlife from the effects of toxic pollution. And, excuse me here, I need a little drink, because some very important part of who we are is water. And as we go through these things, you know, again, without that, there's no us. And the next thing I'd like to talk about is the return of the salmon. And focus a little bit today about, on the fish in particular, or on the resiliency of that salmon and everything we've put it through over the last 100 years. And in our creation stories, in the very beginning, salmon was one of the first things to give itself up to us as pitiful humans so we could survive. And in turn, they take care of us, we take care of them. We've never necessarily broke that, but because of the development with the dams, the hydro production, all of those things, we've lost that in the Upper Columbia. We haven't had salmon in the Upper Columbia for 80 to 100 years. And the tribes have done a lot of work here, and recently since 2016, we've been having cultural and educational releases. So, we have been releasing fish in the river. We've released fish in Shimon Creek, Hayman Creek, the Little Spokane, the Mainstem Spokane, on the Columbia Kettle, and Sampoel. We've released fish in all of these areas, and they've successfully spawned, created reds, and again, show us that if we get them over those dams, if we can get them into those waters, they remember what to do. They know how to take care of us. They know that there's traditional spawning grounds in Canada, and that instinct, and that drive, desire to get their still air. When we turned those fish loose above Chief Joe and Grand Cooley, they went upriver and spawned at the base of Cooley. Some of them peeled off and spawned in the Okanagan River. So, for the fish, that's there, and now it's up to us to provide them that opportunity. Throughout the years, we've spent hundreds of millions of dollars trying to save the salmon by looking at the current situation. We basically stopped looking at salmon above Chief Joe. So, the only way we see that this is really going to save the salmon is if we can get them back above those two facilities, get them up in those traditional spawning grounds in Canada, and it'll be better for all of us. I know I'm running short of time here, and I get going and have a hard time not talking about how important these issues are to all of us, not just culturally, spiritually, but a lot of the pushback is the economics. And generally, folks will look at power as a benefit, fish as a cost. We've got to quit looking at things like that. Power is a benefit, wildlife, fish is a benefit, ecosystems are a benefit. There's an economic evaluation on our website that looks at the economics of ecosystem function and ecosystem services. And just one little note out of that, they talk about the ecosystem providing $190 billion annually to the local economies, and we like to talk about hydro production and all the benefits and how much money that produces. That's 3.3 billion a year. So, in comparison, you look at that 190, 3.3, we're just looking to get somewhere in the middle where, again, power's a benefit and fish is a benefit. They're not a cost. And with that all, again, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and if there's any questions, we've got a lot of information on our website, ucat.org, and my phone number's in there. Take calls anytime and look forward to actually hearing from some of you guys as we look to bring those salmon home at the base of Spokane. So, thank you again. Night.
Thank you, D.R., for that, and we have discussed maybe having D.R. back for actual study session to be able to ask some of those questions, and then you can ask questions of us. Going on to the consent agenda, we have a number of people who want to speak tonight. We'll start with Alex Stein, Justin Holler, and Sunshine speaking to the Consent Agenda. Alex, is he online?
Alex, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand.
Let's go to Justin Holler and then Sunshine.
And Justin, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand. No, Justin yet.
Keep coming, Sunshine, you're up.
Sunshine, born in Spokane. This is about the cops and stuff. I am very thankful that you're giving these guys this stuff, and thanks for the new van you gave us for the detox and STARS program. But I'm very, very thankful for all this stuff you're giving them, their tools that they need. I'd like to see that you guys start giving them a little bit more mental health stuff too, because of, with all the fentanyl deaths that they're seeing and the overdoses, I think it's having an impact on some of them that are my friends. And so, I'd just like to see maybe us do a little bit of that too. I think tools from all angles. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Zach DeBagic and Claire DeBiklins. Zach, are you in person? Claire, is it doing a calling?
Yeah, Zach or Claire, if you're online, you can start three to raise your hand. Nothing yet.
Nothing. All right, that's all the public testimony consent agenda. Councilman McAtcart.
Could we take number two separately?
Absolutely. So, we'll be taking number two. So, let's start with number two on the consent agenda. All those in favor of number two, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? I believe that was six to one, Ms. Fister. Thank you. On the rest of the consent agenda, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? Thank you, that was seven zero.
Special Budget Ordinances. Ordinances amending ordinance number C-36626 passed by the City Council December 9, 2024, entitled in import part an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, making appropriation adjustments for year 2025, and declared an emergency. Ordinance C-3660 arises from the award and acceptance of the USCM Innovation Grant Funds.
There is public testimony on this. Zach DeBagic? Claire?
Zach or Claire, if you're online, you can hit star three.
Seeing none, any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you, that's seven zero.
Ordinance C-3661 arises from the need to resolve gaps in the region's response to the opioid crisis.
Several comments from this ordinance. Christine Quinn, is Christine in the house? Richard Letico, come on down, Richard, welcome.
And Christine, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand.
Hello, everyone. Is it, okay. Hello, everyone, my name is Richard, and I'm a first-year student here at Gonzaga University, it's the University District. And today, I'm showing my support for Special Budget Ordinance 3661. If this ordinance were to be passed, it would supply a total of $18 million towards the expansion of Spokane Stabilization Center. A total of $18 million came from federal, city, and statewide funding. This would be a really good step towards helping the city's opioid crisis, especially both indirectly also helping other issues such as public transportation and housing. Why I say that is because a lot of the reason why we're having a lot of trouble with expanding other services is because a lot of people, things like the opioid crisis are actually a root cause of all of these other problems. So, if we could solve this opioid crisis, we could solve all these other problems as well. Now, how would this stabilization center do it? Well, if we're expanding the stabilization center, that would be more beds, more harm reduction. So, if we could focus more on harm reduction rather than more than law and more than like penalizing people for using these illegal drugs, if we could focus, yes, even though these drugs are illegal, focusing on harm reduction first really addresses the root cause of the problem. So, that is, in collusion, I do think that this expansion of this harm reduction center will be a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Is Zach? Claire? Any council commentary? Councilman McAtcart.
Yeah, I'll be voting against this today. And just real quickly, I just, I feel like we have not been very effective at spending these opioid dollars, and this continues to be a little bit of the case. $140,000 on a data analyst, I feel like we could be sharing that with the county, saving some money. I really don't think that has to be paid for fully by us. The STARS investment, I think, is good, but the SRHD investments, I don't know, I worry, I feel like there might be a better way to allocate those dollars. SRHD does have a surplus right now from 2024 treatment services that can be applied here without us needing to spend these dollars in this particular way, which would free them up to be used perhaps more effectively elsewhere. And I just don't think we've explored that or had those conversations. And so, at this point, I'm going to vote no. I would love to see frankly, just a big plan around how we can use these dollars wholesale in a more effective way. I feel like we're nickeling and diming ourselves, and this is a pot of money where we've got some flexibility, we could actually accomplish some things, and instead, we're just sort of whittling it away a little bit here and a little bit there without a grand vision or a grand plan, certainly not one that has been brought to us for us to cement in as like, yes, this is the direction we should go. We just hear little bits and pieces from the administration when they present these things, and so it's hard to get a clear understanding of the broader plan. But the stabilization center was mentioned earlier, you know, that to me is a more effective way to spend the dollars on a broader expansion of stabilization. And so, could we look at the 10 or so million that we have left of opioid dollars and figure out a way to either bond those or leverage those in such a way that we can make those investments now? But again, not nickel and dime ourselves yearly until the money's gone and we don't have a lot to show for it.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I want to thank the mayor and her administration for really working on this and creating a package that I think will make a difference. I want to go back to that this is a data-informed approach, that we had a presentation as a council about gaps in services and that this is bringing forth a plan to address those gaps in services. And so, I want to appreciate that and appreciate the county for matching a lot of this too, that this was really done in partnership with the county. This is going to bring expanded access to the clinic until 10:00 p.m. Right now, it's only open until 5:00 p.m. It's going to have 12 additional sobering beds. It's going to have culturally-specific treatment. I think this is all really needed in our community. This is where we hear from providers, from people in the community about gaps in services, and that this is a critical investment that I think will really work towards keeping people, getting them off the street and getting them clean and sober again.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I think this is overall a net positive. Excited about a lot of the collaboration that, one of this to find matching dollars with the county, and also mentioned previously, the additional STARS beds. And I do agree, I think there's a longer-term solution and deserve to look at the stabilization center and really how we kind of further develop that third leg that's so often between jail and the emergency room, and I think that this is a really important component to that. And then also, the culturally-specific treatment, looking at a lot of the disparities between what Black and Indigenous patients encounter, I think that this will go to a long way in helping this crisis.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I mean, there's nothing wrong with the programming, there's nothing wrong with expanding the access, everything like that. I mean, that's all very good, we do need to be responding, and hopefully, when you're spending half a million dollars, hopefully, it's net positive. But the point that I think Councilmember Cathcart was making, the point that I think is very poignant, is when we're spending half a million dollars a year and $140,000 is going to a data analyst, I think there's a better way to spend that $140,000 to where we can get more of it into the treatment and helping more people by not spending so much on an average annual salary. And honestly, with the direction things are going, a data analyst is not as necessary as it used to be. I mean, we could get an AI program for 20 bucks a month to check this out and make sure that, you know, we're getting that data and getting the analysis. And honestly, with the amount of data we get in this space, probably be more effective for us to have somebody not doing it and having an AI program doing it for us. And so, my opposition to this, again, isn't the partnership with STARS, I think that's great, I'm glad to see the counties partnering with us, but the $140,000 coming directly out of city of Spokane funding, when that money really should be used and should be deployed on the streets, that's my opposition to it. Not because the program is bad, but we could certainly do this far better with a far bigger bang for the buck if we had more dollars going into these programs.
Councilman Klitsky?
Thank you. I think that this is something that the city of Spokane can't do alone. So, this coordinated effort that we're doing here, this contribution that we're making, the amount of money that we're putting into this would not be able to accomplish everything that we need to do. So, this collaboration has come together, these are the needs that everyone agreed to, and so I will be supporting this.
You have a council commentary? Councilman Bingle? And then Councilmember Zepone?
I was just going to say on the data analysts, we talk all the time about having data-informed decision-making and using the data and tracking metrics after we do interventions, and a large part across the city, we don't actually have a way to do that. And so, I'm really grateful that we do have the opportunity to track these interventions and have data that we'll be able to use to make the best decisions going forward, so it's not just doing an intervention without seeing if it's working.
Councilman McAtcart? I'm sorry, Councilman Bingle, do you want to speak again?
Yeah, I was, again, just going to say, this isn't anti-data or anti-any of those programs. I think that there was a better way to get these dollars out, a way where we could have gotten data as well without having to spend $140,000 a year of $500,000. Okay, so you're spending $140,000 of your $500 on a data analyst, so that means only $360,000 is going out into the field. As you're getting it out, now every single program out there is going to take their administrative fee, right? Everybody's going to get their 10% to 20%, some of them take up to 27% or 28% as we saw as we were looking to do sidewalks, I think the one we heard was 27%. And everybody starts taking their cut, and out of that half a million dollars, how much actually gets out into the community without the city of Spokane needing to take $140,000 to spend on a data analyst? Is data important? Yes, it's incredibly important. And that's why it's so frustrating that in this space, we continue to ask for data and we can't get it, we get a lot of roadblocks into getting the data. And so, for us, having another data analyst, I'm not even confident that we're going to be getting the data off of that. I mean, and so, the best way for us to do this, I think the partnership is great, Councilman Klitsky is not wrong, we cannot do this alone, we absolutely need a coordinated regional approach. It's a very good thing that the county is joining us, it's good that we're joining a program that is well-respected, that will do a good job in the community, this isn't anti-any of that. The, my opposition again is we're spending $140,000 on an analyst when it could have been an AI program and we could have got more money out into the field.
Councilman McAtcart?
Yeah, I mean, data is constantly, from the day I arrived till today, gate-kept away from at least some of us, perhaps all of us. And so, to hire another gatekeeper, which is what this appears to me to be, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Just give me the raw data, that's what I've been asking for, and I'd be more than happy to synthesize it and analyze it myself.
Anyone else? I will be supporting this tonight. I know people are concerned about the data, but this will give us some benchmarks. We have been collecting data, I don't think we are truly benchmarked where we're at and where we're going, what the outcome looks like. So, I think this is important, and I think it's also important the partnership with the county. We are entering new territory around this, which is great, so we have to start somewhere, and this is a great opportunity to see where it goes. Also, I'm hoping this data will leverage other resources, because we know we can't do it alone, and we cannot fund it alone without the data to back up what we're trying
Opioid crisis, especially with indirectly also helping other issues such as public transportation and housing. Why I say that is because a lot of the reason why we're having a lot of trouble with expanding other services is because a lot of people, things like the opioid crisis are actually a root cause of all of these other problems. So if we could solve this opioid crisis, we could solve all these other problems as well. Now, how would this stabilization center do it? Well, if we're expanding the stabilization center, that would be more beds, more harm reduction. So if we could focus more on harm reduction rather than more than law and just more than like penalizing people for using and for using these illegal drugs, if we could focus, yes, even though these drugs are illegal, focusing on harm reduction first really addresses the root cause of the problem. So that is in collusion, I do think that this expansion of this harm reduction center will be a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Is Zach? Claire? Any council commentary? Councilman McCattart?
Yeah, I, I'll be voting against this today. And just real quickly, I just, I feel like we have not been very effective at spending these opioid dollars, and this continues to be a little bit of the case. A hundred and forty thousand on a data analyst, I feel like we could be sharing that with the county, saving some money. I really don't think that has to be paid for fully by us. The Stars investment, I think, is good, but the SRHD investments, I don't know, I worry, I feel like there might be a better way to allocate those dollars. SRHD does have a surplus right now from 2024 treatment services that can be applied here without us needing to spend these dollars in this particular way, which would free them up to be used perhaps more effectively elsewhere. And I just don't think we've explored that or had those conversations. And so at this point, I'm going to vote no. I would love to see frankly, just a big plan around how we can use these dollars wholesale in a more effective way. I feel like we're nickeling and diming ourselves, and this is a pot of money where we've got some flexibility. We could actually accomplish some things, and instead, we're just sort of whittling it away a little bit here and a little bit there without a grand vision or a grand plan, certainly not one that has been brought to us for us to cement in as like, yes, this is the direction we should go. We just hear little bits and pieces from the administration when they present these things. And so it's hard to get a clear understanding of the broader plan. But the stabilization center was mentioned earlier, you know, that to me is a more effective way to spend the dollars on a broader expansion of stabilization. And so could we look at the ten or so million that we have left of opioid dollars and figure out a way to either bond those or leverage those in such a way that we can make those investments now? But again, not nickel and dime ourselves yearly until the money's gone and we don't have a lot to show for it.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I want to thank the mayor and her administration for really working on this and creating a package that I think will make a difference. I want to go back to that this is a data-informed approach, that we had a presentation as a council about gaps in services and that this is bringing forth a plan to address those gaps in services. And so I want to appreciate that and appreciate the county for matching a lot of this too, that this was really done in partnership with the county. This is going to bring expanded access to the clinic for until 10:00 p.m. Right now, it's only open until 5:00 p.m. It's going to have 12 additional sobering beds. It's going to have culturally-specific treatment. I think this is all really needed in our community. This is where we hear from providers, from people in the community about gaps in services, and that this is a critical investment that I think will really work towards keeping people, getting them off the street and getting them clean and sober again.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I think this is overall a net positive. Excited about a lot of the collaboration that went into this to find matching dollars with the county. And also mentioned previously, the additional Stars beds. And I do agree, I think there's a longer-term solution and deserve to look at the stabilization center and really how we kind of further develop that third leg that's so often between jail and the emergency room. And I think that this is a really important component to that. And then also the culturally-specific treatment, looking at a lot of the disparities between what Black and Indigenous patients encounter. I think that this will go to a long way in helping this crisis.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with the programming, there's nothing wrong with expanding the access, everything like that. I mean, that's all very good. We do need to be responding, and hopefully, when you're spending half a million dollars, hopefully, it's net positive. But the, the point that I think Councilmember Cathcart was making, the point that I think is very poignant, is when we're spending half a million dollars a year and a hundred and forty thousand dollars is going to a data analyst, I think there's a better way to spend that hundred and forty thousand dollars to where we can get more of it into the treatment and helping more people by not spending so much on an average annual salary. And honestly, with, with the direction things are going, a data analyst is not as necessary as it used to be. I mean, we could get an AI program for 20 bucks a month to check this out and make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting that data and getting the analysis. And honestly, with, with the amount of data we get in this space, probably be more effective for us to have somebody not doing it and having an AI program doing it for us. And so my opposition to this, again, isn't the partnership with Stars. I think that's great. I'm glad to see the counties partnering with us. But the hundred and forty thousand dollars coming directly out of City of Spokane funding, when that money really should be used and should be deployed on the streets, that's my opposition to it. Not because the program is bad, but we could certainly do this far better with a far bigger bang for the buck if we had more dollars going into these programs.
Councilmember McClitkey?
Thank you. I, I think that this is something that the City of Spokane can't do alone. So this coordinated effort that we're doing here, this contribution that we're making, the amount of money that we're putting into this would not be able to accomplish everything that we need to do. So this collaboration has come together, these are the needs that everyone agreed to, and so I will be supporting this.
You have a council commentary? Councilmember Bingle? And then Councilmember Zepone?
I, I was just gonna say on the data analysts, we talk all the time about having data-informed decision-making and using the data and tracking metrics after we do interventions. And a large part across the city, we don't actually have a way to do that. And so I, I'm really grateful that we do have the opportunity to track these interventions and have that, or data that we'll be, we'll be able to use to make the best decisions going forward. So it's not just doing an intervention without seeing if it's working.
Councilman McCattart? I'm sorry, Councilmember Bingle? Do you want to speak again?
Yeah, I was, again, just gonna say, this isn't anti-data or anti-any of those programs. I think that there was a better way to get these dollars out, a way where we could have gotten data as well without having to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year of five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so you're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars of your 500 on a data analyst. So that means only $360,000 is going out into the field. As you're getting it out, now every single program out there is going to take their administrative fee, right? Everybody's going to get their 10% to 20%, some of them take up to 27% or 28% as we saw as we were looking to do, you know, sidewalks. I think the one we heard was 27%. And everybody starts taking their cut, and out of that half a million dollars, how much actually gets out into the community without the City of Spokane needing to take a hundred and forty thousand dollars to spend on a data analyst? Is data important? Yes, it's incredibly important. And that's why it's so frustrating that in this space, we continue to ask for data and we can't get it. We get a lot of roadblocks into getting the data. And so for us, having another data analyst, I'm not even confident that we're going to be getting the data off of that. I mean, and so the best way for us to do this, I think the partnership is great. Councilwoman McClitkey is not wrong. We cannot do this alone. We absolutely need a coordinated regional approach. It's, it's very good thing that the county is joining us. It is good that we're joining a program that is well-respected, that will do a good job in the community. This isn't anti-any of that. The, my opposition, again, is we're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars on an analyst when it could have been an AI program and we could have got more money out into the field.
Councilman McCattart?
Yeah, I mean, data is constantly, from, from the day I arrived till today, gate-kept away from at least some of us, perhaps all of us. And so to hire another gatekeeper, which is what this appears to me to be, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Just give me the raw data. That's what I've been asking for. And I'd be more than happy to synthesize it and analyze it myself.
Anyone else?
I will be supporting this tonight. I know people are concerned about the data, but this will give us some benchmarks. We have been collecting data. I don't think we are truly benchmarked where we're at and where we're going, what the outcome looks like. So I think this is important, and I think it's also important, the partnership with the county. We are entering new territory around this, which is great. So we have to start somewhere, and this is a great opportunity to see where it goes. Also, I'm hoping this data will leverage other resources, because we know we can't do it alone, and we cannot fund it alone without the data to back up what we're trying to implement. So thank you all. Prepare to vote. That's five to two. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36672 arises from amended grant award letters issued by AOC reducing the awards to municipal court.
We have Zach and Clara again. I believe Zach should be in person and Clara might be online.
Don't see them? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Seven zero?
Ordinance C 36673 arises from the opportunity to purchase and add equipment to vehicles and at the end of their lease term.
And Zach and Clara?
Not seeing them? Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Six one?
Emergency ordinances. Ordinance C 36663 of the City of Spokane, Washington, authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed $58,700,000 of the city's unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2025, to provide money to defees, to defees and/or refund all or a portion of the city's outstanding unlimited tax general obligation bonds, Series 2015, providing for the call, defeasance, payment, and redemption of the refunded bonds, providing for the option of selling the bonds by competitive or negotiated sale, delegating authority to the designated representative to determine the manner of sale and terms of the bonds under the conditions set forth herein, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, designating a fiscal agent, pledging the city's full faith, credit, and resources to the payment of the bonds, creating and adopting certain funds and accounts and providing for deposits therein, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax and securities laws, delegating certain actions in connection with the preliminary official statement and the official statement, declaring an emergency, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Mr. Wright, it's been requested that we take all three of these together. Is that possible as a vote after Ms. Fister reads them?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead, Ms. Fister, then we'll take all these as one vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36664 of the City of Spokane, Washington, authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed $53 million of the city's limited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2025, to provide money to defees and/or refund all or a portion of the city's outstanding limited tax general obligation bonds, Series 2015, providing for the call, defeasance, payment, and redemption of the refunded bonds, providing for the option of selling the bonds by competitive or negotiated sale, delegating authority to the designated representative to determine the manner of sale and terms of the bonds under the conditions set forth herein, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, designating a fiscal agent, pledging the city's full faith, credit, and resources to the payment of the bonds, creating and adopting certain funds and accounts and providing for deposits therein, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax and securities laws, delegating certain actions in connection with the preliminary official statement and the official statement, declaring an emergency, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. And ordinance C 36665 of the City of Spokane, Washington, authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed $112 million of the city's water and wastewater system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2025, to pay, defees, redeem, and retire all or a portion of the city's outstanding water and wastewater system revenue bonds, Series 2014, providing for the defeasance, call, payment, and redemption of the refunded bonds, providing for the option of selling the bonds by competitive or negotiated sale, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, delegating authority to the designated representative to determine the manner of sale and terms of the bonds, under the conditions set forth herein, designating a fiscal agent, providing for the registration and authentication of the bonds, creating and adopting certain funds and accounts and providing for deposits therein, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax and securities laws, delegating certain actions in connection with the preliminary official statement and the official statement, declaring an emergency, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
All right, we have Zach and Clara one more time, and then Justin Holler, if you're online. Can you hit star three, Justin?
Seeing none? Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I earlier made a motion to defer this for a few weeks, asking for some clarity on it. I want to thank Matt Boston, our CFO, for coming down and giving us some clarity. These are the kinds of measures that will help the city potentially save millions of dollars a year in our, in our obligations. And basically, what these do is they allow the administration, if the time is right, to refinance these bonds and get us a, a better rate and potentially save us some money. And right now, with the instability of the bond markets, you know, administration needs to be able to make that decision in, in, you know, short order. And so this is us basically giving them authorization that if the time comes that it's beneficial for the city, go ahead and do it. And, you know, that's us still stewarding the money's, the, the city's money well and could potentially save us, you know, seven figures a year, which is a big deal.
Any other council commentary?
I'd like to thank our CFO, Matt Boston, as well, for coming down and going over this. It is critical to give them the ability to be nimble when the opportunity presents itself. Prepare to vote. We're voting on all three. Seven zero? Thank you.
Resolution 2025-24, approving the board's commission's administrative policy for the City of Spokane.
Zach and Clara?
Any council comments? They're not with us. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Seven zero?
Ordinance C 36650, relating to intergovernmental purchase contracts and interlocal purchase agreements, submitting section 7.06.140, repealing section 7.06.261 of the Spokane Municipal Code, deferred from March 31, 2025 agenda.
No Zach or Clara?
Council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, this was one I asked to, to be deferred, just to clear up some language to make sure that as we give authorization in certain instances for the administration to enter into contracts on our behalf, that it was still very clear that when the time comes for the bill to be paid or any financial commitment, that it would still come here. And there was no disagreement with the, with the administration. It was just, for me, it made me feel comfortable to add a couple of words in there, and they were amenable. So thank you to the administration for, for working on that, and thank you to council for deferring this, and I think we got to a good spot here.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Seven zero?
Ordinance C 36659, relating to designated truck routes, submitting section 12.08.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
No Zach or Clara?
Any council commentary? Councilmember McCattart, then Councilmember McClitkey?
Yeah, this is, I think, a very thoughtful change. In fact, one of the, the changes that it makes is in Hilliard, redirecting truck traffic away from, from downtown Hilliard, which is really important and key to just the businesses operating there, the quality of life, the ease of pedestrian access to things. And so it's, it's going to be a really good change, I think, and really appreciate the administration bringing this one forward.
Councilmember McClitkey?
I was just gonna say, it's been well over a decade since we have updated this plan, and it might behoove us to consider doing this every time we update the comprehensive plan, maybe.
Thank you. Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Seven zero?
Ordinance C 366666, titled Ban the Address and Expanding Fair Chance Hiring Practices and Amending Sections 9.02.010 through 9.02.050 and Sections 9.03.010 and 9.03.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Thank you. We have a number of public comments. We have John Alder, Amy Manning, and Brad Barnett.
John Alder from northeast Spokane. First, I want to support this ordinance, but I'm also asking for further steps to help the homeless get the job they want. We still need 24/7 shelters with laundry, showers, and storage. This will enable them to get cleaning themselves, wear clean clothes, and keep all the possessions at the shelter and not the job interview. Now, I combine this with the ordinance, the ordinance with Alder would help the domestic violence victims that my friend Karen Moby talked about. This would help them in transition as well. Both these things would help create the opportunities for both homeless and people in domestic violence situations.
Go Chiefs!
Thank you, John. Amy Manning, and then Brad Barnett?
Amy, if you're online, you can hit star three to raise your hand.
Come on down, Brad. Welcome.
Good evening, Brad Barnett, Spokane, Spokane Business Association. This is a simple, low-cost, no-cost legislation with potential huge upsides. Taking away the requirement for the address, I know there's still several communities, I'm not sure in Washington, but around the nation, that don't have home mail delivery. So they're required to have P.O. boxes. So I think for us to move past that mentality of, we see a P.O. box, then it must be somebody that's homeless. This proposal also ensures that applicants can be evaluated based on their skills. At the Spokane Business Association, we believe that the solution is support access and recovery and reintegration into society. Employment is one of those strong predictors for stability for people trying to recover. And one of the things that we really, at the SBA, want to applaud is the fact that this council has really come together in a bipartisan support for this piece of legislation. And we applaud that. We hope that this is a new model moving forward, dealing with public safety and a lot of the other issues that we face. So often, I know you get criticized because there's infighting, and this shows that we do have the ability to come together for the greater good of Spokane. And while this ordinance won't solve the homeless problem, it really shows kind of the spirit we have as a community to come together, to not discriminate based on where somebody sleeps at night, but based on their work effort. And we think this is a great ordinance, and we support it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Brad. Next is Will Hewlings, Jamie Smith, and Sunshine.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I do not support ordinance C 36666. This disgraceful, insulting joke of an ordinance, they're calling ban the address. Are you kidding me? This is supposed to be a solution to Spokane's exploding homeless crisis? It's not just useless, it's offensive. Another smug, feel-good stunt by three council members that does absolutely nothing to address the real problem. They say this promotes fairness in hiring for people without an address. What? How the hell is, does this help anyone when they are hauling their entire life around in a shopping cart on their back, sleeping under bridges, sleeping on the sidewalks outside of my apartments where I live? Get them anywhere. Are they supposed to go to a job interview filthy, exhausted, and starving? This ordinance doesn't fix any of that. It just checks a box so that these out-of-touch politicians can feel good about themselves, like they did something. And this has been going on for years. I've been coming here before you guys, most of you got on city council, and we've been talking about it. And one of the big problems is you keep on using Jules stealing or Jules helping hands, just throwing all this money to her and all these nonprofits, like Empire Health Foundation and all these different nonprofits that don't do nothing. So, and guess what? Spokane isn't falling for it. According to KHQ, 62% of the people see this for what it is, a total farce. So 62% of the people in Spokane don't agree this is going to do anything to help our homeless problem. But like I said last week, maybe you guys should come up with something else. Maybe get a real shelter, maybe do something for people, instead of just coming up with these little ordinances that don't do anything. That's it.
Thank you, Will. Jamie Smith? Then Sunshine? I think Jamie's online?
Yeah, Jamie, can you hit star three or raise your hand? All right, go ahead. You are unmuted.
Thank you so much, and thank you for help with technical issues. I am in huge support of this ordinance. There are so many barriers to getting our unhoused brothers and sisters even that introduction through the door. And so taking this one barrier away while not solving all problems does improve and move the needle forward even just a little bit. This does also have the potential to help people who are not in safe housing situations apply for jobs and find stability. It's a really great idea, and I really appreciate it. This is a tough problem to tackle, and it's honorable that we're doing this. It is also very key to remember that aside from figuring out how you're going to pay your employees, there isn't much of an actual need to know someone's home address. So unless you're planning on paying them, you really don't need to know where they live anyway. So as one of the previous testimonies stated, this is really low-risk, high-reward, and I love to see it, and I appreciate all that you all are doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Sunshine, and then Justice Forall.
Sunshine, born in Spokane. On this, I don't know, like, so a lot of us have P.O. boxes, or say we use the, the shelter addresses and stuff. So once you use that address at a shelter, say, they're gonna know that you, you know, you're using that address. It could be your mailing address or whatever, because a lot of us don't even stay in the shelters that we use the addresses at when we use those. I feel that even though you're gonna, well, you might, you're considering taking the address away, once they know that you have one of those types of addresses, they know. And so if an ordinance is in place, it's not going to matter either way. They still know that in their minds. I'm not saying that I don't support this or I do support this, this is just something I see in this. And so I know that in my 32 years of homelessness, that if you're determined to get a job, you get a job. You just keep plucking away, trying, trying, and trying. And sometimes, when a door is closed, it means the better door is going to open for you. And you wouldn't want to work for somebody that looks down on you for that in the first place. So that's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Justice Forall is online, I believe?
Go ahead, Justice, whenever you're ready.
Um, can I? Hello, can I ask if the text issue has been resolved for everybody? Because I saw the numbers are different on, online versus what you have on the final agenda.
Not clear on that one, Justice, but we can hear you. If you'd like to go ahead and testify.
The correct number to call, well, if anybody else is trying to testify and they were missed, the correct number to punch in for the access code, it's 24904939490. Not the one that's listed in the final agenda. If people are having trouble, that's probably why. I was trying to log in for a while. This ordinance is very important, of course. It does not do nothing. It's not as far as we need to be going when it comes down to progressive changes to actually impact homelessness, but banning the address actually helps a lot of other discrimination areas, not, because where people live is another way for people to be discriminated against, right? If people are living in poor neighborhoods or, you know, less reputable neighborhoods, and they list their address and somebody knows where that is, it does, you know, happen where employers will discriminate with that. Banning the address is, you know, a very simple step forward to make sure that people can still have, gain full access to employment. But overall, it's, you know, I agree 100%. It's not enough to what we need to be doing to make sure people are getting livable wages so they're not falling into homelessness or even starting their life if they're, you know, a young person who's just out of high school, you know, trying to make it on minimum wage. With rents going up right now, and right now, we're working at a, there is a phone bank session I'm at, put on by Resident Action Project, that's trying to make sure that there is some rent stabilization happening, because, you know, rents are always going up and people- up, and people can't afford anything, especially if, you know, wages are not going up in lieu. Thank you so much for your time, Justice Forall, Spokane, City of Spokane. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice. Next is Teri Anderson, I believe she's calling in. And after her, Melanie Perry.
All right, go ahead, Teri.
Okay. Good evening, city council members. My name is Teri Anderson, and I'm the Director of the Spokane Office of the Tenants Union of Washington State, and the Interim Executive Director for our state organization. And I'm here today speaking in strong support of this ordinance that will prohibit employers from asking job applicants for their address during the hiring process. Many Spokane tenants are just one rent increase away from an economic eviction or a court-ordered eviction, so this ordinance will help them. This ordinance is a simple but powerful step towards removing a barrier that often excludes people experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity from opportunities of employment. When an employer sees an address to a homeless shelter, a motel, or no address at all, it can lead to unconscious bias or outright discrimination before the applicant ever has a chance to show their skills or qualifications. Asking for an address early in the process often acts as a proxy for judging someone's stability or background. But in reality, housing does not reflect someone's ability to do a job, show up on time, or be a meaningful member of a team. This ordinance makes it clear that we value people for what they bring to the table, not where they lay their head at night. This policy doesn't stop employers from gathering necessary information later in the hiring process for tax or legal paperwork. It simply prevents the address question from becoming an unnecessary gatekeeper at the very beginning, when people need a fair shot the most. We cannot say we are seriously about addressing homelessness and the economic inequality if we allow outdated hiring practices to keep people locked out of opportunity. This ordinance is a smart, focused measure that will help our job market be more equitable and inclusive. Thank you for the ordinance sponsors, for your leadership, and considering this, taking this important step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Next is Melanie Perry, and after that, Dave Bilsland.
Melanie, go ahead whenever you're ready. Melanie, you should be on.
Hi, this is Melanie Perry. I live in, I live in the city. Yeah, I am just calling in in support of this ordinance. It sounds like such a simple, easy way to, like, help all kinds of different groups of people get, like, legging the job market. It's, of course, not, like, the only thing we should be doing. We really need to be looking in other ways of helping to stabilize and get our unhoused people into proper housing and moving their lives forward. But yeah, it's a great, simple thing, and I'm fully in support. Thank you so much. I hope everything goes well.
Thank you. Dave? Dave Bilsland? I so want to call you David, but, hey, Dave.
What's that?
I was going to call you David.
Good evening, folks. This is an important thing for many reasons, and the one I want to speak on tonight, is there is a bias against certain neighborhoods. If you live in certain places, you just ain't so cool. If you've got the wrong address, you ain't getting out of there, buddy, you're stuck. If you have to keep putting that on these applications. You got to give these people a break and help them get out of what hellhole they're already in and trying to get out of. If you put down the House of Charities address, you're not getting the freaking job. So when you ask that address, are you giving the address of a junkyard in Dogtown? You ain't getting a job, because you're living in a junkyard. Okay? That is a fact of life. People can't climb up the ladder if they're not given an even chance. You got to look at their capabilities, not where they lay their head. And there are people that will not hire somebody that lives in a certain area or a certain address. Okay? It's hard to get a job when you live in a wolf. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next is Louisa Sevier. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Louisa Sevier. I want to just start off by offering the reminder that when we're talking about any of these issues, like, people so often say "the homeless problem," and that language is so dehumanizing. We really need to remember that we're talking about individual people with hopes and dreams and aspirations and families. When I was really little, my dad was experiencing homelessness, and he was living out of his car. And I just, he tried his hardest to hide that from me, because who, what parent wants their six-year-old child to know that they are sleeping out of their car and are having a hard time making ends meet and can't always have three square meals a day? So I just can't help but imagine how much easier my dad's life would have been when I was younger if there had been an ordinance like this already in place, and how much more stable that would have made my childhood. So I really want to thank you all for considering this, and please urge you to pass this ordinance. It will positively impact so many people, not just the unhoused people that will be able to get a job, but their families, their children. This can do so much good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is Claire online? Do you see Claire, or is that? All right, Council Commenter? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I, this is a very, very minor ordinance, a very small tweak, but it is reasonable. I think one of the most effective ways out of homelessness is a job, and it is a proven path to stability. So it makes sense to remove a barrier like this. And in the grand scheme of impacts, I mean, this really pales in comparison to the millions we spend on homelessness, much of it without accountability. So for this, I'm very happy to support, glad to be a sponsor, and look forward to seeing it voted in.
Council Commenter? Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think, and when we heard this in committee, you know, Councilor Cathcart said, described it as low-hanging fruit, and I think, you know, that's a good way to put it, and I think it is still an important step, and, you know, it's exciting, too, to learn that we're really making history tonight as the first city in the country to pass an ordinance like this. And really, what this ordinance does is affirm that housing status should never define someone's potential. As this ordinance has been moving forward, we've heard a lot of heartfelt stories. There was one that was highlighted in Creme from James Bodie, who was unhoused, found a job, talked about this ordinance, and really talked about how much this would have changed his life, and now said, "I've never been happier. I know what true happiness feels like, and I know what it looks like, and I know that others see that in me." Employment really is a critical way we have to reduce homelessness, help people get back on their feet. I really want to thank Sarah Golubek Goldman, who had some research that was really instrumental in kind of retooling this ordinance from the Yale Law Journal, and Councilmember Navarrete, Councilmember Cathcart, for all their support and work, and I think really being open to collaboration on this. I think it's an interesting night, too, when you have S B A and S C A R supporting the same policy. I think that's a good night for Spokane, and really, this ordinance comes down to dignity, and I'm excited we're taking this step.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarrete?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback what Councilmember Dylan and Councilmember Cathcart also said and stated for "ban the address." I am honored to also sponsor it, and again, this was part of what was originally somewhat part of the, what the news dubbed the, thank you, the Homeless Bill of Rights. You know, also, being the first city in the nation to adopt this, wow. I don't know how anybody else did not see, and I don't, was there a poll on this? Probably not. But like, if we had gone on polls on putting this, you know, or any other ordinance or resolution, having polls on TV, "Do you pass this?", I don't know what would become of us, you know? Anyways, so I'm just happy that this is finally happening. We had several testimonies from folks that came up here and shared the same, that, you know, they, they lived in homes or in cars as homes, or in shelters, and wanted to succeed and get a job, but were denied because of their address. And nobody should be denied without, you know, if they, they don't have anywhere to live. That is discrimination. Some testimonies, you know, people carrying their lives in shopping hearts, shopping carts, not being clean enough, that's just nasty. Those comments, I mean, that's very discriminatory, exactly what this ordinance says. We will not discriminate anybody that wants to look for a job. Everybody deserves the right to be treated equal. So happy for this, and happy that I'm going to vote for it.
In the commentary? I'd like to just acknowledge my council members for the collaboration on this. It's been a while, but we finally got here, and I'm proud to be in a city that recognizes everyone. I know it's not enough, we all acknowledge that, and we know we have a ways to go, but I'm happy that we started right here. Prepare to vote. Clear it? I cleared it for you. All right, let's try it again. Prepare to vote. I promise this machine is not me. There you go. Six to one. Thank you. Thank you, but no clapping allowed.
First reading ordinances, Ordinance C 36670 relating to regular adjustments of fees, charges, and other assessments collected by the City of Spokane to ensure they reflect the actual cost of service delivery, and amending section 4.02.010 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36667 relating to discrimination and affirming protection of LGBTQIA2S+ communities in Spokane, amending sections 8.01.020, 0.030, and 18.02.030 of Title 18 of the Spokane municipal code, creating a new section 3.07.340 in Chapter 3.07 of the Spokane municipal code, and establishing an effective date. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances. Sorry.
Thank you. We have several public comments. Al Oliva? Is Al in that room?
That's Al Oliva, and he has to be moved to the twenty-eighth. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. J R Sunshine? He's going to be joined by Webb, if he's online?
Go ahead, J R, whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm a mom of a transgender daughter in District One in Spokane. I'd like to thank the council for considering the changes to the Ordinance 36667 to expand protection for trans kids and families in Spokane, and for providing this opportunity to speak to the fear and stress our families have been experiencing under this presidential administration. The attacks on transgender individuals have been increasing for years, rife with misinformation, badly-designed studies, and fake organizations created to further an anti-trans agenda. These groups are focused on erasing transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming individuals from public life. Nowhere has this agenda been more evident than in the hateful and extreme executive orders we've seen and the ban on transgender individuals serving in the military. President Trump has repeatedly called gender-affirming healthcare "child abuse" and has signaled his intent to go after the providers and families of trans kids. He's threatening to withhold funds to force providers to comply with his anti-trans policies, even when the law is not on his side. Gender-affirming healthcare is already being impacted in Washington State, and this has already affected my family and my child. More impacts are imminent. Just last week, the Department of Health and Human Services set up a snitch forum so neighbors can report on neighbors they suspect are receiving gender-affirming care, like vigilantes, regardless of state and federal law. They want to pit federal powers against states, states against each other, neighbors versus neighbors. Even our local school boards are jumping at the chance to discriminate against transgender students, using these policies as cover, despite the conflict with state laws. These folks will exploit any crack in Spokane's arm. I'll be frank, we're scared. My kid deserves to live without fear of her medical treatment being withheld, her privacy being threatened, and as a parent, I should be able to get healthcare for my kid and keep her safe without fear. Please vote to protect our most vulnerable neighbors, our kids, and our families. I'd like to thank you for considering these updates to C 36667 to protect healthcare, privacy, and safety.
And thank you, J R, your time is up. Thank you, Mary Grace. I believe she's on WebEx calling in.
Mary Grace, if you're online, you can press star three or raise your hand. By WebEx? Yep. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
I'm testifying in support of Ordinance C 36667. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. When I heard this ordinance was being drafted, I was shocked, but pleasantly surprised. I had heard about Olympia's resolution, but wasn't convinced that a symbolic resolution was what we needed here in Spokane. Upon further investigation, I'm so proud of the work put into this ordinance and what it does. After Spokane Valley passed a resolution announcing their opposition to Washington state law, it became even more urgent that Spokane start living up to its motto, "We all belong here." Spokane families are scared, and with good reason. It's long overdue for us to stop relying on the state to make Spokane a welcoming place for all. It is time for us to make active steps towards improving the lived experience of the 2S LGBTQIA+ plus community. Part of improving that lived experience includes the urgent need for city-level protections. I want to remind city council that in June of 2022, a white nationalist and anti-LGBTQ hate group was arrested outside of Coeur d'Alene Pride. There were thirty-one members, with only one of them from Idaho. Some were from Washington. In 2023, five of these members were convicted of conspiracy to riot. The attorney, the attorney that represented them in court is based in Spokane, right by the Northeast Community Center. That same day, less than a mile away, an anti-LGBTQ group gathered to pray the Catholic Rosary, led by a self-identifying Christian nationalist and attended by affiliates of the white nationalist America First Movement. Also nearby, a motorcycle-riding club event encouraged its members and allies to gather with firearms and take a stand against the Pride gathering. This ordinance commits the city to working with organizers to prioritize the safety and well-being of event attendees. And let me reiterate, the attorney that defended the members of this hate group is based in District One of Spokane. Members of that group were from Washington, and we know that this presence is alive and well in Spokane. It shouldn't be controversial for a city to commit to valuing its community members by taking steps available to back up that value with action.
Thank you, Silas, your time is up. Aaron C., and then Gretchen McDevitt.
Hi, my name is Aaron C. I live in the City of Spokane. I want to share a couple small examples of why Ordinance C 36667 is important to me. One, when I got a small raise last year, it changed our eligibility for Apple Care for my son, who was transgender. And on top of losing insurance, we would lose access to the kind and beloved pediatrician who had worked with my son from birth through his transition. And we needed to enroll him either in my or my partner's employer-sponsored healthcare insurance, which were both based out of state. And we took on this stressful task of trying to confirm with prospective insurers and our employers that gender-affirming care was covered, because it's the most critical service that he gets from our insurance. And at a point that we had waited for weeks, and we still hadn't gotten clear information to make a choice, I had to consider seriously leaving a job of fifteen years that I love to secure employment with better healthcare coverage. Given the animus that is Given the animus that is targeted at transgender people in our country right now, I'm not sure that there's many city employees that use or would need gender-affirming care for themselves or their dependents that might need access to it would readily out themselves to their employer. So on their behalf, I just want you to know that for the folks that need these services, it makes a really incredible difference. We're watching and we care, and thank you for considering this ordinance.
Thank you, Erin. Gretchen McDevitt, then Will Quinn.
And Will and Christine asked to be removed from tonight's.
I'm Gretchen McDevitt, Spokane. I am speaking on the transgender ordinance. I tend to support Councilmember Bingo's proposals, which the majority defeated last Monday. Tonight, I specifically am addressing what is typically called gender-affirming care, but unfortunately includes life-altering, often risky, permanent medical procedures. I'm sure you've all heard that our brains do not fully mature on our, until our mid- twenties. This knowledge has been used by many Democrats to suggest that laws reduce the prison sentences of adults by not counting their many offenses committed as teenagers. Yet laws in Washington and this ordinance ignore this information on brain development and see no concerns with allowing teens to undergo hormone treatments and even surgery to remove breasts from females and testicles and a penis from males, and at times even without parental notification. Gender-affirming care for teens should not typically include such drastic treatments. What it should predominantly mean is thorough mental health support and considerable education on the effect of transitioning, both pro and con, hearing from those who have been happy with their decision and those who have not. It should include social and behavioral support to transition in their appearance, activities, and in ways that are not so permanent. And as much as possible, it should involve parents, who often are bewildered and need support and education too. On this, and sadly on many issues, we seem to be in power struggles and will not even come together for the sake of the people we are trying to support. But I hope at the very least, the council will amend this ordinance to recommend caution, to acknowledge that hormone treatment and surgery decisions are often permanent and risky, and should be entered into with much thought and careful consideration. And because our brain continues to develop and mature for most people into our twenties, such decisions are best made when we are adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Holler, and then Amy Manny. Justin was calling in, film line.
Justin, if you're online, you can hit star three.
Amy Manny? Will Hughings?
Is this Amy or Justin? Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, Justin.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I don't understand what the whole confusion about the alphabet soup community is. There's only two genders. All you have to do is look between your legs and figure out which one you are. And I'm not a religious person, but there's male and female, and that's how everyone was created in the room that you're in, by a male and a female. Everything else is pretty much mental illness. I feel sorry for the people that think that they're something else, but I also feel sorry for the people who raise transgender kids because they are brainwashing their children into thinking they're something that they're not. And I think CPS should be called on these people because they are, by and large, like you've heard from testimony, with their partner, which usually refers to a same-sex marriage, which I don't really care, but a lot of same-sex marriages create transgender people. And it's unfortunate to see so many people trying to brainwash their child into thinking that they're something that they aren't versus accepting who they are. I wanted to be a pirate when I was a kid, but my mom and dad didn't cut off a leg and poke my eye out to make me a pirate. Thank God that they didn't do that, because they recognized it was just a phase. I don't care if you like pink or, or blue, there's only two genders.
Thank you, Justin.
That's it.
Thank you. I would really like silence in the chambers, please. Can we be respectful? Will? And then after Will, Jamie Smith.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hughings, and I live downtown. I do not support this ordinance one bit. Ordinance C-36667, yet another outrageous, divisive, and completely unnecessary ordinance rammed through by three far-left Democrat council members. This isn't about protection, it's about pandering, virtue signaling, and wasting our time and taxpayer dollars. This ordinance is loaded with radical ideological nonsense. Gender-affirming care, periodic policy reviews, resource allocation based on gender identity, and all this talk of equity and affirmation. For what? To cater to a tiny fraction of the population that already enjoys equal rights under the law? We are all protected by the same constitution. Why is this council so obsessed with pushing gender confusion, inserting identity politics into everything, including healthcare, and flooding our beautiful downtown with rainbow Where's the ordinance to get junkies and homeless people off our streets? Where's the damn urgency to fix Spokane's real problems? Let's not forget President Trump, on day one of his second term, signed an executive order restoring common sense, recognizing that sex is male and female. He's repealed a lot of this DEI nonsense, which we don't need as a minority. I think that's just crazy that you guys are all, everything's based on gender and identity and all that nonsense.
Thank you, Will, your time is up. Jamie Smith, is she online?
Jamie, if you're online, go ahead when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time. I am calling in support of ordinance, yeah, sorry, the number escaped me, and while I'll look it up, I'll just keep talking. Um, a few, sorry, finally found it. C-3667, thank you. This is a really, another, like, great ordinance to see on the agenda. It reaffirms why I, as someone who moved away from Spokane, wanted to move back and live in a city that cares about its people and all of its people, whether that's our immigrant community, whether it's our 2S LGBTQIA+ community. I really recognize and appreciate that in these meetings, we start with a land acknowledgement, and this ordinance follows up with actual action, including two spirits, people who are often undermined and forgotten as just being part of a alphabet soup, as it were, when it is truly a very unique entity that needs to be recognized. I also appreciate the fact that this isn't specific just for trans individuals, as many people, regardless of their sex or gender, do require gender-affirming care. It also updates our language for human rights code so that we are following through on our commitments, and it makes sure that there isn't discrimination happening or that the data that we're all already kind of on edge about different groups having access to is protected.
Thank you, Jamie, your time is up.
This is a great button.
Dave, Bill Slan, and then Louisa.
Hello, Dave, Bill Slan, Logan, you know me. I'll make you all a deal. I'll stay out of your bathroom if you stay out of mine and everybody else's. What happens in that stall is personal, private business, and it's nobody else's business. I guarantee you, if somebody comes through the door of the bathroom that I'm in, I don't care where my pants are at, the fight is on. And I figure anybody else invades somebody else's bathroom, they got every right to defend themselves, because that's offensive. Disturbing somebody in the middle of their bathroom, it's terribly offensive. Isn't that an agreement? So how are you going to keep track of who's what? Because it's none of your damn business. People are who they're going to be, and let them do that, because it's, again, I say, none of your damn business. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Louisa? And after Louisa, Alexander?
Good evening again, council members. Again, my name is Louisa. I'm here to urge you to pass Ordinance C-36667 and reaffirm Spokane's commitment to protecting the 2S LGBTQIA+ communities in our city. As a queer woman, I don't know how I could adequately communicate to you all the fear that my friends and I have been living in since Donald Trump's election. My trans friends have been trying to decide between continuing to exist as their full, authentic selves, which puts them at risk of being a victim of a hate crime or going through the mental and emotional suffering of denying who they are purely for their own safety. This ordinance is not about queer people wanting special treatment, it's about us wanting to feel safe, being who we are in public, which is a right that everyone should have. It's about creating a world where everyone can be who they are without fear. And my friends should not have to think about fleeing the country to feel safe and to access the medical care that they need to feel at home in their own bodies. And as far as the comments about there being only two sexes, I believe those people need to do a little bit more biology research because there are many variations in chromosomes, in hormones, and so there's a lot more to being human than just male or female. So I'd like it if people could do a little bit more research before making baseless statements like that. Thank you so much.
Alexander?
My name is Alexander Verada, and I live and work in the city of Spokane. I'm speaking today in my capacity as a private citizen. I've watched recordings of these meetings, but I have never been here in person, let alone made my voice heard. I am doing this now for the same reason, I feel this city needs this ordinance, because there are people in this community who need to know they have support and acceptance, that their local government cares for them and will protect them from the harms of prejudice. National conversations about LGBTQ+ people, particularly transgender people, are filled with misinformation and rhetoric rooted in disdain and fear. We have the misery of being made the scapegoat for public frustrations and insecurities. It emboldens acts of violence against us. It bars us from highly effective healthcare. It is upsetting, it is exhausting, and it exposes us to constant risk, both mentally and physically. It is tragic that we live in a time where we have to clearly state that marginalized people are deserving of health, safety, and freedom, that trans people are just human beings present in every community, representing a full spectrum of personalities and bodies. But as long as there are those who insist otherwise and who affect policy accordingly, we must be explicit in our advocacy or risk complicity. To that end, I'm speaking in strong support of Ordinance C-36667. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karen Pooley?
Good morning, good, good afternoon, council. My name is Karen Pooley. I very much object to proposed Ordinance C-36667. Last year, Washington voters overwhelmingly approved the initiative for Washington Parent Bill of Rights. Right now, in Olympia, the legislators are in opposition to the voters. They are currently amending that Bill of Rights, and this council should not also be in opposition to the Washington voters by approving this ordinance. Washington does not allow children to tattoo themselves, to vote, to drink alcohol, to drive, to buy marijuana, or to go fight wars. But we are allowing them to castrate themselves, expose themselves to a higher risk of cancer by ingesting these hormones, and robbing them of sexual pleasure. It truly is, I believe, barbaric. If this decision should be made on a personal level, it should be made by an adult. Mandating insurance to allow this is even more barbaric. If this council chooses to move forward with this nonsense, and I believe it is nonsense, I support all of Councilmember Bingo's amendments. Men and boys should not be allowed into women-girls bathrooms. Men and boys should not be allowed to take away women-girls athletic opportunities. Women and girls should not be subjected to seeing male genitalia if they are in women's changing rooms or bathrooms. I believe this is really truly misogynistic agenda. I finally ask you, why are we not protecting girls and women? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative business. We will now proceed.
I don't realize it, so what?
Sunshine? Are you on this one, Sunshine, or open forum?
I thought I heard you mention her at the beginning.
No, there was a JR Sunshine. You're not on this list, Sunshine, but if you want to come down, you've got two minutes.
So I used to work at a kids program, after-school program at Peaceful Valley Community Center with the kids, and they were having a lot of mental health problems, the ones that were transgender or the LBGQ, I don't know how to appropriately say it. So audacy was made because of that, and that, that helped a ton. And then also, we were having problems where people that were transgender were getting beat up, brutally beat up, in the shelters. And we had to make that stipulation to where they could go into the women's shelter or so that they weren't getting beat up by the mentality of the street people. And my daughter did marry a woman, and so I support that community and stuff. But once the, a man was allowed, transgender was allowed into those shelters, it made us that have been through domestic violence feel a lot more scared. But in the end, there was never any problems with transgenders in the shelter. They, they were very, very thorough in the Hope House how they dealt with it. And so I do support this, and I support all the amendments that were made and everything. I think it's important to support this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Now, that concludes our legislative business. We will now proceed to open forum segment of our meeting. There will be no clapping, no cheering, no booing, and no public outbursts. There is a two-minute time limit for comments made during open forum. Please note, council members will not respond to specific questions or engage with individual speakers, but can be available to answer questions or set up conversations after the We will start with Patrick Goldberg, and then Alex Stein. Patrick? Alex Stein? Alex Stein? Maraca, and I'm gonna butcher your last name. Welcome. And would you please pronounce your last name for us?
Yes, my name is Mirak Kazanjian.
Thank you.
I stand before you today to bring awareness as our community commemorates the Armenian genocide, a tragic and undeniable chapter in human history. Between 1915 and 1923, over one and a half million Armenians were systematically slaughtered by the Ottoman Empire in a deliberate and calculated attempt to erase an entire people from existence. Marking atrocities with recognition is a clear message that we will not allow history to be rewritten, nor will we tolerate genocide of any kind, in any form, against any people. Recognition is not simply a symbolic act, it's a moral imperative. It is the way to affirm our commitment to truth, to justice, to human rights, and to the dignity of all people, not just Armenians. Ignorance and denial, on the other hand, allows a cycle of hatred and violence to continue. Many Armenian-Americans call Spokane home. Most, like me, have grandparents who were survivors of the Armenian genocide. Others are from more recent genocidal attempts against Armenians, such as the Baku programs in 1988, the Garapao War from 1988 to 1994, and the ethnic cleansing of Artsakh over the last five years. For us, the legacy of the genocide is not distant history, it's heartfelt reality. As an owner of an Armenian business here in Spokane, sharing my culture is about this legacy. It is about keeping their memory alive and turning their sacrifice into an endowment, ensuring that our culture and our identity not only remains alive but thrives. It is about remaining steadfast against the completion of this genocide. Commemoration not only honors the victims, but also validates the enduring pain carried by the survivors and their descendants. If our city wants to be a place that compassionately embraces diversity, it is important to come alongside communities during moments such as this. It is about standing on the side of justice, honoring our neighbors, and ensuring the horrors of the past are not forgotten. Thank you.
Eugene Knowles? And then Wendy Fishburne?
Good evening, President and City Council. Eugene Knowles, I've been here living in Spokane since 2010. Well, I got lucky this evening, because two points, I'll just go right into it. Last time I was talking about the blue and the green, the right hand, and this week I'm gonna talk about the left hand, the red, and on the blue and the green, I had the numbers zero to four, and we'll put them aside, because tonight, I got lucky, number five came up, and especially number six. But the ones I'm gonna focus on after I mention five and six are the ones at the bottom. This is the red hand, this is homelessness. Number seven, campers. Number eight, street refugees, and number nine, that's the bad stuff. And that's where I got lucky, because we brought up fentanyl again, and the people who, the council members who call that nickel and diming, they were right. Maybe I won't get a chance to get to it, but I just want to acknowledge, that was nickel and diming, that hundred forty thousand, forget all that, let's get back to the good stuff here. Number five is UGM. That's a shelter that's self-sustaining and self-supporting. Five point five is House of Charity gets a bad rap. They do good work, but it's in a bad place, so they get it bad. Track Shelter, number six. Unmitigated disaster for someone who doesn't know how shelters are supposed to operate, it's gone now, I guess. Okay, now, seven, eight, now, when the shelter's like five and six don't work, five, like UGM works, six fails, you get campers, but campers is a phenomenon, I was homeless for a few years back in the teens, campers happen when you don't get your shelters right.
And thank you, Eugene, your time is up.
Okay, I got number three next time. That was number two, number three.
All right. Thank you. Wendy, and after Wendy, Glenn Stockwell.
Good evening, City Council President and members. I'm Wendy Fishburne, and I wanted to come down for two reasons. Praise where praise is due, and a challenge. Focus on fentanyl. Thank you for the meeting last Friday. The presentations were alarming. It was so encouraging to have you all in one room with the county commissioners and the mayor, thanks to you. Thank you for focusing on fentanyl. If fentanyl was a serial killer, we'd have a task force assigned. If it were a climate crisis, we'd have made an emergency declaration by now. Fentanyl must be priority number one. Please come and join us for the Save Our Spokane event tomorrow evening at the top of the steam plant, 6:00 PM. The community is gathering to stand with Katara Jones-Johnson and others as we launch the Gabrielle Challenge. Would love to have you each present. The challenge, please, 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 stop wasting our limited resources on ideological topics that divide us. We have so much more that unites than divides us. We need to fix our potholes. We need to fund cops. We need you to engage in what the majority of Spokane is asking for. Your job is to represent your people, so enforce Prop One. Sit and lie, protect our parks, our schools, our river, protect our kids, and don't defer these things indefinitely. That's insulting, because they matter to the majority. Spokane is for public health and safety, not ideological posturing that divides us. Unity matters. Let's come together where we meet together, in the middle, with honor and respect. I hope to see you tomorrow night, and I hope to see a bipartisan bill supporting the will of the people, Prop One, and sit and lie. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Glenn Stockwell, and then Will Hughlings?
Hello, Council. My name is Glenn Stockwell, I'm from Ritzville, Washington. I spent some time with the county commissioners today. They said they're gonna be around nineteen million dollars short next, on the money that they're gonna be requiring. I was in this building here on August 26, 1987. I was part of the crew that put together the Solid Waste Project for Spokane. I have a long history of this. I can show you how you can, you can save fifty million dollars per year. If you divide the money that Mr. Byrd gave me, a basics of eleven million that you need, and the nineteen over there in the valley needs money, I'll, I'll sign a contract that if I don't show you how to save the fifty million dollars, you won't owe me one penny. I'm fully qualified to do what it is I'm offering to do for you, and I'd like for you to employ me, so I can show you how to acquire the money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenn. Will, and after Will, Sunshine?
Good evening, again. My name is Will Hughlings, and I live downtown. So I've lived downtown since 2019, and I'm pretty furious with what has happened to downtown, especially where I live. It used to be very vibrant, you know, nice, peaceful, now it's not. Walk out my door, and what am I exposed to? Just like today. I mean, something got to be done. Homeless people, a lot of these homeless people are out there doing fentanyl, smoking meth, and Councilman Dylan mentioned that there was a big drug bust in my apartment, which I was surprised I didn't even know about. And so that's part of the big problem. You got people that you move in off the street, get them into housing, you put them up into nice apartments with normal people, and then they take advantage. And how do they take advantage? They, they deal drugs, they bring all their homeless people, that's a large majority of the people hanging out are probably there to, because they're drug dealers inside our building, and it's, it's very embarrassing. Walk down our side, walk down right in front of our building, and you will see what I'm talking about. Graffiti, I mean, you had the DSP talking about cleaning up downtown, they sure as hell don't go and clean up in my name, on my block, for whatever reason, which tomorrow I'm gonna call and find out why. I mean, I've been given all these different excuses, but if you want to go eat at the satellite, or you want to, you know, go to Monterey Cafe, or go to any of them mooties or any, you gotta walk past my building. I've seen people literally walk out in the street just so they don't have to walk down the sidewalk, because they don't want to walk through the big crowd of people out there doing drugs. But anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Sunshine, and after Sunshine, Justin Holler? And after Justin will be Monica Tittle.
Okay, Sunshine again. Born in Spokane, but I feel like I'm not supposed to be here because of the policies. So I struggle, obviously, something really bad happened to me to make it to where I've been homeless since 2018. Multiple things have happened to me in my life, but I am asking that we, so we have a task force for the gangs, for the cops, right? I mean, that's awesome that they're trying to fight all that, but can we get someone from Revive that has a history of gangs, or even if it was they, they were around the gangs and the prisons, or whatever their background is, or someone who's had to hide from gangs or dealt with gangs, to specialize in coming to some of our calls for the homeless as an outreach worker to relate with them and try to maybe help them fight some of those barriers if they are fighting with gangs, or if they're trying to get out of a gang and they cannot be in, get out, you know, or what are some of the steps that they can do? I think Revive is the perfect place to find that, and I highly support Revive because of those people have turned their lives around, and they are going in the right direction, and I think this is a tool that we shouldn't take for granted, and I think they have a lot of experience that just brings our homeless community amazing things, so thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Justin?
Hi, my name's Justin Haller, District One, and I echo the thoughts of what I said online before I could get here in person. I don't care what you look like, I don't care what your background is, but there are two genders. I'm not a religious guy, but I know when you grab between your legs, you feel one of two things, that's it. Everything else is mental illness. And I feel sorry for the people who don't know what they are, don't think they know what they are, and I think it's largely the culture, I think it's largely the brainwashing from the media and the agenda to confuse people, to keep people conflicted and not knowing who they are and what they are. It's really sad. There are so many more, there are so many other issues to deal with, like the copious amounts of overdoses, the drug dealing, and the homeless people blocking the sidewalks, which creates an AMA violation, which my former neighbor works at Walmart, and he's in a wheelchair, and he can't get by sometimes at Walmart up north, and I don't think that's okay. You know, if you can't get by the sidewalk, if you're sleeping on the sidewalk, maybe you're so far gone that you need special treatment, and you shouldn't get a place to live right away, maybe a halfway house, or an SRO, or some kind of training or program before we shove you into a unit run by Rob McCann or Jewel Stealing Hands. I didn't stutter, Jewel Stealing Hands. You know, Rob McCann has decimated every neighborhood he's built, and ruined the downtown core with five cracked ends. You have people yelling up to their drug dealer at five in the morning, you know, all hours, and there's zero accountability for what he's created. Now he's infiltrated the West Hills neighborhood, and that's been decimated too. Make it make sense. You know, you guys aren't doing anything. You spend copious amounts of money on the homeless, never solving anything, and now you got this five-year plan? I got a two-year plan. End all funding the homeless. Boom, done, the leave.
Thank you, Justin. Monica? Is Monica Tittle in the room? Seeing none, that concludes our open forum for this evening. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. That concludes open forum. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Moving to second to adjourn all those favor pleas indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and he knows, abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you.